Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2025. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers at the northwest door by which you entered. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. The order of business of City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement has been waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that day nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Excuse me. Our first item of business today for our City Council Meeting of Monday, February 3rd, 2025, is a reminder that due to President's Day holiday, City Council will not meet on Monday, February 17th. Next on our agenda would be our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
All right. Would President and CEO Kate Bowles for Community Health Endowment please come forward with your nominee?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I am here to introduce Dan Marvin, which frankly feels a bit of a redundant exercise, given his experience here at the City Council. But I will say, from a C.H.E. perspective, his previous service on our board, his investment experience, and his experience with urban development all add value and insight to our board's functioning, particularly because we have invested in the Belmont Community Redevelopment Plan. We look forward to working with Mr. Marvin on that and thank the council for their interest and support on that project. It is, of course, the mayor's appointment and the city council's vote, so I think that serves as an introduction, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do any councilors have questions or comments, either for President Bowles or for...
I have a lot of respect for Mr. Marvin. He's done a lot of service for the City of Lincoln, so great to have you back onboard.
Yeah, look forward to it.
Yeah. It certainly is easy to applaud this nomination, Mr. Marvin. We, I think most of us know you fairly well and know what kind of good work and what expertise you bring. Thank you.
Thank you. So, for, it's really one of the more fulfilling boards that I've ever been on, so I look forward to returning. And you learn things about your community that you otherwise would never have known anything about, so it's a great board to be on. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve again. All right. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on a consent item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 1A is Appointing Dan Marvin to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for terms expire September 1st of 2027, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 2A was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Beckius. Any discussion? All right, let's proceed.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Let's move forward to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call item 4A, Accepting and Approving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for January 1st through January 15th, 2025.
All right. Is there anyone here who'd like to discuss an item on claims against the city? Please come down. We have two microphones, and you can take either one. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for meeting. My name's Marcy Woita, and I got a letter in the mail saying the city denied a claim that we had submitted when my son's car got struck by a flying object from a lawnmower. And when I reached out to the city, they told me how to proceed, which I did. And then when this letter came, apparently they were a third-party contract, and so my claim was denied. And I have since reached out to the Beatrice Lawn Care Company, and Joe Armstrong was the owner, and he apparently has sold it. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how we need to proceed in this claim.
Okay.
We have an estimate, I guess, from a repair shop as well, because there was damage to the driver's side front door. And I think, you know, by the time they went back, after my son was coming home from school, he heard something hit, didn't know what it was, got home, looked at it, oh my gosh. By the time they went back to go see who it was that did it, they were already gone from that area of mowing, which is on 70th over, I believe in front of Culvers.
Across from Culvers on, by 70th and Pioneers.
Okay, all right. And would you identify yourself?
My name is Jeff Woita. I am her better half.
I assumed, but I, I didn't want the assumption to be on the record. Thank you. Okay. And did, are you saying that your claim, the claim amount has changed since you filed the claim?
No, it's still the same. I mean, but it's just, we've been denied, and we don't know what to do. I mean, the city said, okay, and we went through the proper channels, I guess. And at this point in time, they sent the letter, so then we in turn called who it was that was doing it, and they're like, well, we've been sold. So we're at, you know, we kind of want to know how we need to proceed at this point in time to hopefully get our car fixed and get that rectified.
All right.
I mean, I just received, I asked for the contract between the city and the Beatrice Lawn Care, and I just received it this morning. But glancing through it, I don't see anything that says who claims liability for that, so.
How much damage was there?
The estimate was twenty...
Two-two-zero-two-eight-five?
Twenty-two-hundred-and-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Okay. Are there other questions, councilors?
Not of them, but I would like to have the city attorney.
Okay. Just, do any councilors have questions for the Woitas? Okay. Then if you wouldn't mind having a seat or standing to the side, we're going to ask some questions of our city attorney, and you may come back.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Christie? And I do see you sitting there, Director, so we might talk to you as well.
Yancey Christie, City Attorney.
All right.
As it pertains to the damage, if this was Parks and Rec mowing and something was thrown out, who would be responsible for that damage?
Well, I'm going to give you the answer that it depends. I mean, under your hypothetical, you're suggesting that there is no question about who, whether negligent or anything like that, right? But this wasn't Parks and Rec.
Right.
Right. This would have been the third-party contractor.
They would be the city's agent, though, wouldn't they?
We have agreements with them where they, I understand she saw the contract, it's in the indemnification language usually in the contract, but they, part of the deal when we hire these third-party, you've seen this probably with, it probably comes up most often with snow removal, I think, but it's very similar. They, it's there, it is our understanding, and certainly when we enter these contracts, we believe it's their understanding as well that they are responsible for the claims. I just recently found out what she shared with you today about the change in ownership. And what I can tell you is I'm happy to look into that, but certainly it doesn't change our perspective that we entered this contract with this third-party and they agreed to handle claims, these type of claims.
That's, the explanation you've given is what I kind of expected, but I think I would like to delay this one claim so that we have a chance to kind of look into it.
Now, we can do that when we come back to voting session. Does anyone else have a question for the, Mr. Christie? Councilman Beckius?
Just so I understand correctly, so when vendor contracts to the City of Lincoln, they're providing to you proof of their insurance, at time of contract execution, I would assume, so you have on record the insurance provider at that time that you can then provide as well?
Yes, and I, it was, my understanding that it may have been already provided, but yes. Yes, we do.
Very good.
Maybe not, I don't, I thought so, but.
If there are no other questions about this particular case, let's...
I'd like to ask the people come back up.
Okay.
To see if they do have that information.
Okay.
No more questions for me, then?
No. Thank you.
You're good.
All right.
Ms. Woita?
Yeah. Did the city provide you with that information on who the insurance company was?
They said, not as to who the insurance company was, no. Not to who to contact or...
Read the letter.
What they have the letter. I mean, it just says to contact the city council. I did call Lily, or emailed Lily.
Yeah.
And she did send over some insur, like, their insurance information, but not naming, like, who, what company. It's, the paperwork was just, I guess, the legal waiver of rights and, but not, like, who, what con, company to contact.
Do you have that document with you?
Um, yeah, I mean, I have, I mean, this is what they sent over.
That is it?
But it doesn't say.
No, it should.
It should, it should say who's providing the certificate of liability insurance.
Is it Jonas Group?
We can't read it.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, it is. And that's who I'd contact in order to submit a claim.
Contact them, okay.
Yes.
They're the provider of the certificate of liability insurance, and so that's who you'd contact in order to submit a claim.
Yep.
United Fire is on there, too, it looks like.
Yeah, they, they just sent this over to us, so.
Okay.
I think that's who's actually liable to help you out with that, those damages. So.
Do they, just on a side note, I guess, do they require those to have baggers on their lawn mowers when they are mowing in the median like that, on a major?
I don't, I don't think so.
No?
I don't know.
Okay. Might be something.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. All right. Is there other, is there any other claimant who'd like to come forward? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the next item.
I'll call item 4B, Special Permit 1020J, Application of Bryan Medical Center to amend their existing special permit to allow temporary banner signs on the property generally located at 2300 South 16th Street.
All right. Is the applicant here on this, on this special permit?
Yeah.
Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Phil Zaccardi. I serve as the Vice President for Health Services and the Facilities Representative for today's request.
All right. So, Mrs. Zaccardi, would you mind explaining a little bit about your proposal?
Yeah, so 2025 is Bryan Health's 100-year anniversary. Pragmatically, the request is to be able to display some banners that would be lit facing towards the building, so no lighting that would disrupt streets or, you know, residential areas. And we would do that throughout this, throughout this year. So, just an opportunity for us to obviously celebrate Bryan, the employees, and obviously the community that has made it what it is.
Are there any questions from councilors on this proposal? I have, I think, a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, I wanted to, I saw that this was a temporary?
Correct.
A temporary banner, and that temporary means a year?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, congratulations. 100 years is a big deal. You said that there'd be lighting on these banners. So are there lighting, is there lighting installed right now on that section of the building where you want to drape the banner?
Yeah, so the way that it would function is ground lighting at the, at the landscape level would essentially angle up and illuminate the light, or the banners in the light, only obviously after dark.
Okay. And have you had conversations with your neighbors about this?
Some, probably not formally about the request. Most of the neighborhood streets or residential streets are actually far enough away where they would not, they would not be directly, they would not be in the aura of the light, I guess is the way to put that, because of the way the streetlights are aligned. They would actually see those streetlights in their front yards or windows before they would actually see the illumination of these lights. And again, these lights would be very lowlit and not, not done 24/7 either. I believe at 11:00 PM, we would actually turn them down.
Okay, so they might come on at dark, but then go off 11?
Correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this application? And I believe this, three locations at each of the Bryan hospitals. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Helm. I identify with the pronouns of he and him. I reside at 2750 South 13th Street, which is Oto, Missouri land, and also in Irvingdale neighborhood where this particular location is. I was curious on which side of the building the signage would be on, or if it was going to be on multiple sides.
Okay, we can ask that question.
Okay. And my, my feelings about, you know, corporate healthcare and for-profit healthcare notwithstanding, I think it is a remarkable achievement for the Bryan group to be acknowledging a 100-year anniversary. I do recall when they came to the neighborhood taking over the old Lincoln General Hospital and had expansions associated with that, and came to the neighborhood and, you know, talked about what they were going to do and some of the landscaping that was going to occur. And I think, you know, based on my proximity, that that has worked out fairly well, although some of the properties just west of the current Bryan West location are in a little challenging state. And I know that the use of helicopters for transporting patients has caused some consternation over the years with the noise, but since that has moved to the roof of the building, I think it's much better. And, you know, I appease myself with knowing that when I do hear the helicopters, there is life-saving event, a life-saving event occurring. So I temper my frustration with the noise with that. That being said, I am in favor of this. I think Bryan has been a good neighbor for us, to us, and I do appreciate, you know, there being there in our neighborhood, and I hope that they can be allowed to fully celebrate their remarkable achievement. So I hope you will support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Mr. Zaccardi, would you come forward, and we'd like to ask you one more question? And this would also be your time to, you know, wrap it up if you'd like to add anything else. But Mr. Helm asked the question, where would the signs be located?
Yes, so I believe we were talking about the West Campus. So my understanding is, and I'm trying to do this from memory on the streets, it would be north-facing, and it would be east, excuse me, west-facing. But again, west-facing only on the non-parking lot structure, so on the physical hospital campus itself. And I don't have any additional comments.
All right. Does that suffice?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We can move on to the next item.
Madam Chair, may I go ahead and read item 4C and 4D together?
Please do.
Item 4C and D is Special Permit 1219O, Application of Bryan Medical Center to amend the existing special permit to allow temporary banner signs on property generally located at 1535 South 52nd Street. And the Use Permit 24008, Application of Bryan Medical Center to amend the existing use permit to allow temporary banner signs on the property generally located at 3901 Pine Lake Road.
And I'll do a double check, make sure that there's nobody else here who wanted to address any of these items. So the banners at Bryan, either location? All right. Now we can move forward.
I'll call item 4E, Approving the Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Lincoln and the County of Lancaster, Nebraska for Grading and Paving of South 98th Street between A Street and O Street that is partially within the territorial limits of both parties.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, yay, I got a partner.
Director and county engineer.
Yes, Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th Street. I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, 444 Cherry Creek Drive, Building C.
And I'll give a very high overview, and it looks like Pam came better prepared with more details. So essentially, this is kind of a joint, sort of joint, it's more county than city, but joint project on 98th Street. Most of it is still in the county, but there are parts that are within the city limits. So we've been coordinating and collaborating with Pam and her team on this. This interlocal basically explains who's going to do what, who has what responsibility, and I'll just turn it over to you.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, this project is a project that we've been working on for 11 years in county engineering. In 2014, we jointly, through an interlocal agreement, acquired the right-of-way for this corridor, additional right-of-way. There was a 66-foot statutory right-of-way, and of course, we needed 120 feet to build, to build this particular road. We acquired the right-of-way, and in that agreement, we agreed with the landowners that we would build this road and pave it prior to 2030. It's getting to be very close. So with that, we believe that we are on task, that we have the possibility to bid this project in the next 18 to 24 months. Kind of interesting, they have decided to downgrade the required environmental for this project, so we're super stoked about that. Usually, we talk about additional delays, and in this case, we're talking about maybe being able to do it just a little sooner. My long-term goal as county engineer has been to have 98th Street paved from Highway 2 all the way to Adams. And so, we have a mile that we're finishing up south of here, and we have this mile in order to meet that goal. And I have a second stretch goal that I'll come back in a couple of years and talk to you guys about, but I think you can probably figure out what it is. With this project, we believe this is an approximately $12 million construction project. 80% of that $12 million will be paid for with federal funds that flow through the Lincoln MPO, and then the remaining 20% will be split 50-50 between the city and the county. To date, the county has done, or has worked on all the engineering and coordination with the adjacent landowners. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you very much.
She summed it up well. Ultimately, the agreement before you is just kind of making clear what's the city's responsibility, what's the county. At this point, the county has been managing and handling that, all of the, the fun that comes with federal-funded projects. So we continue to meet on a regular basis.
And I guess I could, I could add. I've joked with, I've joked with Ms. Elliott about this, that, you know, should the city decide to annex the entire corridor, we would be happy to finish the project and just hand it over to you.
Thank you.
Very generous that way.
All right. Let's check with councilors. Do any councilors have questions or comments on this?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Is there anyone here in chambers today who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, we can move on to the voting session on resolutions.
Item 4A is Accepting and Approving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for January 1st through January 15th of 2025, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second, Beckius. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to amend to allow the claim of Joseph Rafique in the amount of $20,135.97. This claim has been settled between the city and city law.
Okay, all right. So a motion to amend, okay. Number one. Do we have a second on this?
All second.
Thank you. Carlson, any discussion on the motion to amend, number one? Okay. Let's vote on this, and then we can take up any other motion to amend. Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Councilman Duden, you suggested you might have another motion?
You know, I'm satisfied that they have the information that they needed in the first place to go to the proper insurance agency that would be liable for that particular claim. So I don't see the city as being liable for it at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, then let's go to the main motion.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius? Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 4B is special permit 1020J, application of Bryan Medical Center to amend their existing special permit to allow temporary banner signs on the property generally located at 2300 South 16th Street, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 4C is special permit 12190, application of Bryan Medical Center to amend the existing special permit to allow temporary banner signs on property generally located at 1535 South 52nd Street, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 4D is use permit 24008, application of Bryan Medical Center to amend the existing use permit to allow temporary banner signs on the property generally located at 3901 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 4E is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln and the county of Lancaster, Nebraska for the grading and paving of South 98th Street between A Street and O Street that is partially within the territorial limits of both parties, introduced by Carlson.
So moved. Second?
Second, Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. We can move forward to resolutions, action only.
Item 5A is directing a submittal to a qualified electorist of the city, a proposed ballot question for the April 8, 2025 primary election to continue the local sales tax rate of a quarter cent for an eight-year period to be used for street rehabilitation, reconstruction, and improvements of existing neighborhoods and arterial streets in all quadrants of the city to maximize their useful life, enhance safety, streamline traffic flow, or promote private sector investment, introduced by Weber.
So moved. I'll second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Councilman Weber?
You know, I think there's a first time for everything. And today appears to be one of those days because I'm in complete agreement with Leva. You know, I think Travis's testimony last Monday hit the square on the head that this isn't something that we'd be talking about if it wasn't absolutely necessary. You know, I know in Northwest Lincoln, the top two issues I hear about from my constituents are investing in roads and prioritizing public safety. And I think that this is a program that does both of those. You know, without continuing this program, the city faces losing $18 million in annual funding when it comes to road investment. So that's why I'll be voting yes to send this issue to the voters.
All right. Anyone else? I'd like to ditto Councilman Weber's comments about the necessity of this program and the usefulness of the quarter cent sales tax and how it's helped to improve the roads in our community, not just in the existing areas, but also in the growing, growing areas. And I think that is also incredibly important. Not only does it improve the comfortability of driving and it makes it easier for public safety, but it also helps to grow our community. And I believe, I can't remember now which of the, of the folks spoke last week, but basically no new roads, no new homes. So for that reason, I'm going to support the quarter cent sales tax. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5B is approving a resolution freezing impact fee increases due to inflation for a period of eight years in the event that a quarter cent sales tax renewal is approved by the voters of Lincoln, introduced by Bowers.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 5C is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and railroad transportation safety district for use of not less than 1.5% of the continued one-quarter cent sales tax if approved by the voters of Lincoln relating, related to engineering and construction services for the 33rd and Cornoscar Safety Improvement Project, introduced by Weber.
So moved. Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
All right. Madam Clerk, please move forward.
Section 6 is resolutions. First readings are items 6A through 6C. Section 7 is ordinances. First reading and related resolutions are items 7A through 7F. Section 8 is our pending list, which are items 8A through 8D.
Madam Chair?
Yes.